To our precious Creator, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for the beautiful sunshine that you shed upon us. We thank you for your love, for your honor, but most of all for your guidance. We ask that you have your presence known within this meeting this day. But most of all, we ask that you continue to bless all of those who serve and acknowledge you. We ask for your grace and for your mercy. We ask for your light to shine upon all that is done in darkness, that that light shall bring all honor and truth to light. So please guide this meeting today, that all that will be done will be done to honor you. But most of all, please guide us that we will do what is best for the citizens of this city. That this city will continue to do what is right and to be a good neighbor to all those who we serve and take part with. So we welcome you and we thank you in advance for all that you will do and thank you for what you are doing. Amen.
Amen.
Council, I ask you to take a look at our minutes and we have first of all approvals of our minutes from June the 20th, 24 regular meetings. Do we have a motion? Some move. Second, we have a motion and second and discussion. Hear none, all of the favors certified by saying aye. Aye. Thank you. And we will be prepared to go into our appearance before council and we will be asking each participant to please keep all remarks within five minutes, which will be on honor of our city code section two dash twenty four. And before I call for our first participant, I do want to acknowledge the passing of Reverend Dr. Matt Heinz. Um, I can just personally say that I've always loved and respected Dr. Heinz. I'm actually, some of his family attended church with us, but I've known him for years and I would thank him for the wisdom that he shared with me over the years and also for being a good supporter of my, of me as a person and all that I do. I think that most of us who know him from the moderation knows, I'll tell anyone, there's nobody who could work room like Dr. Heinz when it came time to get you together. Well, you know, it was an honor just to get up and just to see him when he spoke and when he encouraged people to do that support, to support especially church and the moderation. So we have lost truly a person who I can say that I love and I can truly say that he loved what he did. He loved serving people, not only just in a ministerial capacity, but also on a political round. So I'm just thankful that God blessed us to have his presence for all these years and my prayers and thoughts are with his family and with his friends. And so I will say anything that we can do to continue to support his family. Let's please do so. And with that being said, we'll move forward to our agenda. First we have coming before us Ms. Shanetta Richardson from PD Coalition to provide an update on the PD Coalition. Ms. Richardson, would you please come forward?
Hi, good, uh, good afternoon, council and council members, excuse me, mayor and council members. Thank you all for having us first of all to come and share a little bit of information about PD Coalition. My name is Shawnet Darden Richardson. I am the shelter coordinator, director for our emergency safe shelter. And with PD Coalition, many of you know about us, some of you may not. PD Coalition is a nonprofit volunteer organization and we're dedicated to the reduction of sexual assault, family violence and child abuse and meeting the needs of our victims in our community. I am proud to stand before you today and say that PD Coalition has been in existence since nineteen eighty six here in Florence and the PD area serving the community. This year, we will be celebrating our thirty fifth year of our emergency safe shelter, which I am the director of that program. With our emergency safe shelter, we provide space for women and children that are in imminent danger, meeting those needs as they walk in the door. Um, we are operational twenty-four seven, meeting those needs, whatever that client may need as they walk in that door, we are able to provide. We are so excited that this year our theme is a place to lay their heads. Uh, so many times individuals are going through situations, don't know where they can go, the help that they can find. Being a nonprofit organization, operating thirty-five years, serving the community, providing uh over three thousand four hundred and ninety-four services to women and children and providing over two hundred thousand nights of stay for individuals otherwise that would not have a place to lay their head. This year, of course, October is coming, this year is fastly approaching and with October is domestic violence awareness month. And I think throughout the year is focusing on a place to lay their heads. And in doing that, what we're doing, we're collecting items for our women and for our children, for our shelter program. As the individuals come in, that we're able to provide what they need at no cost to that individual. So we're so excited about what we're doing in the community, providing the safe place for individuals, meeting those needs. And if without the community and the support of the city of Florence, we wouldn't be able to do the things that we're doing. You all have supported us throughout the years and we want to say we greatly appreciate what you're doing. You're helping us to save lives, you're helping us to make difference, uh, difference. I'll share a quick, quick story. Just about a month and a half, two months ago, we had a client to come in and that client made that decision on her own to leave. Uh, the services were there or she'd been with us in fact a few times, went back home, lost her life. Domestic violence is real, sexual assault is real, child abuse is real. And I'm so pleased that we were able to still be available at the times that she need us even prior and even up to that moment. But having these services, educating, being in our community, making sure that there is a safe place for that client to lay their heads, that's why we're here. And with your support, we can continue to be here thirty plus more years. So thank you all. And I have Brooke who's with me on today, um, and I'd like to just give her a moment if she has anything that she would like to share.
Hi, good afternoon, I'm Brooke Humphreys. Um, I am a part of the board for the Florence County Chapter of PD Coalition. Uh, first off, thank you very much for your continued support of the PD Coalition. It is unfortunate that we need these services in Florence County, um, as well as the rest of the PD. But, um, thank goodness for what they provide and for the life altering services that they provide on a daily basis. We did receive notification of funds for this year, so thank you very much once again for our supporting. Um, but as you can imagine, we would like to request that any additional funds be considered. Um, for thirty plus years of services, some of the capital needs for our centers are definitely needed. And, uh, the crisis center especially needs new plumbing and a new roof and that can get rather expensive rather quickly. Um, so as a part of the board and request, um, that consideration of additional funds. Thank you.
Thank you both for all that you do and thank you especially to the PD Coalition for being so important to the whole of the PD and what you do. Especially since we as a mission is always in the top ten, always, always when it comes to domestic violence and death. So thank you for working hard to remove us out of that area. We appreciate it. Thank you for this time and opportunity. You're welcome. Thank you so much. Next we had Ms. Hernandez, but she will be coming before council in August. She woke up ill today. Um, next we have coming before us is Mr. Don Strickland, the executive director of PD RTA to provide an update on PD RTA. Mr. Strickland? I don't see him out there. Well, at this time, since Mr. Strickland is not here, I'm sure that he'll probably be with us in the future, but just know that PD RTA is doing some great things. They did give us a report at the flats committee and that was a good, um, update. So, um, I'm looking forward to him coming and giving a update to the whole of the city. Next we have on our appearance of a counselor is Ms. Barbara Brooks to speak to the council regarding traffic signals and safety. I'll ask Ms. Brooks to please come forward.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Um, good afternoon to Mayor Teresa Irvin and all members of the city council. First of all, I want to make a disclaimer. Um, I will make a comment in my note, uh, about a legal comment. I am no expert, I am no lawyer, so I want to make that disclaimer right now. Um, so. Maybe when you as a council member saw this topic on the agenda, you each may have had the following thoughts about installing traffic light cameras from. They are not necessary, will cost too much money to purchase or install, who cares? It is not going to affect me or my family. It will affect my fee, free passage through the traffic light. It will invade my privacy. Our time will be spent better by bringing some large company to Florence and the surrounding areas. And any other adjectives you may want to add. So why do I believe consideration should be given to the installation of cameras in some, if not all, traffic lights? There will be the potential of saving lives and preventing harm. May decrease employees who have been involved in a car accident related to someone running through a red light. Decreased loss of work time may allow child to grow up and become a city councilperson, a judge, a policeman, a nurse, family member, and the list goes on. Let individuals understand the importance of obeying the law. Now what is my purpose for standing before you today? In July twenty-five, twenty-two, at eight o'clock in the morning in Maryland, my daughter and I were on our way to a doctor's appointment. And out of the blue, here comes this large truck plowing through the red light from a side street trying to make it on the main road. So he made an informed decision, he would try to make the light apparently, not thinking about the what ifs. So he ran the red light and hit the car I was in on the passenger side directly into me. Due to the force of the hit, all airbags deployed at great force. And if that has never happened to anyone here, I pray you do not get the experience. Car total, emotional and minor outward injuries and undefined injuries. And the non-disciplined person left the scene. The installed camera was able to identify the less than kind person. So fast forward to Friday, May tenth, twenty twenty-four. A second incident occurred in Florence, South Carolina, and there was no respect for the traffic light. So once again, the impact of the Range Rover that tried to miss my car could not due to his speed to get through the light. His only choice to get through was to hit my car. Fortunately, out of the corner of my eye, I saw the car and said, Lord, that car is going to hit me. And he granted me to grace to stop. If I had not, I do not believe I would be standing here today. Please understand, I had the green light to make the left turn. So fast forward, I lost my car, my nineteen sixty-three Taurus, which I enjoy driving. No fault of mine, but because someone wanted to make it through the light. So it leaves me and anyone else who has had this experience with emotional trauma, unexpected car payments, wondering how insurance and others will respond. Wondering what long-term issues will be, other issues one do not want to deal with. What can be done? I'm here making a plea. City council, look into the number of individuals that have gone through red lights as well as a yellow light. How many accidents have occurred related directly to omission of failure to stop? What type of emotional, physical and financial burden it has caused the individual? What current data is available to show how much money is spent by insurance related to traffic light injury? What have other cities done? Install camera lights, worked out a plan for proceeds obtained, found out how much money is spent by insurance companies because of individuals who run red lights. Institute some form of required education for those who decide to run red lights, such as looking at videotapes that depict the accident and harm. Stats for drivers running red lights, over a hundred and twenty thousand people are injured and over a thousand are killed each year in the United States because of red light violation. That is at least two people a day killed because someone plowed through a red light. Half of those deaths were not the driver or the passenger in the car or divided, they were pedestrians, uh, people on bicycles and people in other vehicles who were hit by the red light runner. Um, and this is from the Insurance Institute for Highway Safety. In twenty twenty-three, the South Carolina Department of Public Safety reported over forty-six hundred accidents due to drivers running red light. The Palmetto State, we are more likely to be injured in crash due to someone running a red light than any other type of a car crash. Red light cameras are needed in South Carolina by Law Office of David L. Hood, maybe some of you might know that practice. Reasons you may say this is not an agenda item for this board to review. I beg to differ to the following reasons. Life is precious and there is only one person who determines when life ends based on his standard. Can a person die earlier than his or her life expectancy? Yes, example, running through a red light with no regard to the other person. Yes, each state has separate traffic laws, but running a red light, a stop sign is illegal in all states. South Carolina prohibit using traffic cameras to issue citations except due to an emergency. What qualifies as an emergency?
And Ms. Brooks, I'm gonna ask that you start to come to a close too.
Okay, so I'll go to my last part and thank you. Um, my suggestions for saving lives, recruit more law enforcement officers that will label policemen at intersections throughout the city encountered to, to observe first, firsthand the frequency. And the main one I want to say is have, uh, work with the South Carolina legislators to change the traffic light rule five, six, seven, three, five, A four, which states speeding tickets may not be given in South Carolina based on photography, all of that. So that's my, um, and I do thank you, um, for this time. And, um, again, life is precious and people are needed for the sustainability of the town and country.
And Ms. Brooks, before you leave, I do want to acknowledge that this has been a topic that Ms. Brooks has been dedicated on working on for a while now. And Ms. Brooks, if you would do so, I will ask that you give a copy of the affirmation to our city clerk and that she can forward the information to each member of council. We will. As to nothing, I mean, I ask and you shall receive. Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you, we appreciate it, thank you for your thoughtfulness and, and always being that caring person and nurse who always looking out for everyone. Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Also, um, we have next on our agenda, Ms. Mindy Taylor, Director, District Manager for Duke Energy to present to the city of Florence, Duke, uh, Duke Energy Emergency Preparedness and Strong Resiliency, um, Dr.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council, I'm Mindy Taylor with Duke Energy. I handle government and community relations for this region of South Carolina. Last month, Duke Energy in South Carolina announced five hundred thousand dollars in micro grants from the Duke Energy Foundation to support community resiliency and to, and to promote local ability to help residents prepare for and recover from significant weather events. And this is all very timely given the hurricane season that has been predicted and I do hope that they are wrong. This is actually the third year of these emergency preparedness grants. The first two years, the city of Florence was fortunate enough to receive twenty thousand dollar grants in each of those years that helped them purchase search and rescue equipment and provide training for staff. And so this year, I'm pleased to announce another twenty thousand dollar grant to the city of Florence Fire Department, which will help them purchase equipment to help block off roads to protect citizens from streets that may have been impacted by flooding or other significant weather events.
And I would like to thank Ms. Taylor and also Duke Energy for being such a dedicated community partner to make sure that things and the needs of the city and the citizens are met. So we truly thank you for that. And to our fire department, thank you for all that you do. And thank you for the city for securing this grant, which we know will also help not only with our fire department, but also with our police force as well. So thank you for everyone for all that you, you do each day. And next on our agenda, we did have appearing before council, um, Reverend Moultrie, but at this time, he's asked to be moved to the August agenda. So that completes our appearances before council. Next we'll move to our ordinance in position. First we have bill number twenty twenty-four dash eleven for a second reading. It's an ordinance to amend and unify and develop ordinance regarding the tattoo facilities. Do we have a motion? Some move. Do we have a second? Second. Do we have a motion and second and the discussion? Hear none, all of the favors signify by saying aye. Aye. And opposed, like sign. Next we have, and the bill has passed, bill number twenty twenty-four dash twelve for a second reading. It's an artist to read on one four zero one, verify draw to O S R to N C fifteen identified as Florence County text map number nine zero zero two nine dash zero one dash zero zero five. Do we have a motion? Some move. Do we have a second? Second. And a discussion? Hear none, all of the favors signify by saying aye. Aye. And opposed, like sign. Let it reflect that the bill has passed, second read. Next we have introduction of resolution. The first resolution is a resolution to honoring the innovate Florence as an innovative partnership for small businesses in Florence. Do we have a motion? Some move. Do we have a second? Second. Right. And a discussion? Hear none, all of the favors signify by saying aye. Aye. And opposed, like sign. None. Just do that by hand, this knowledge those positive? And all of the opposed? Yeah. So we have, okay, let it reflect that the council have chosen not to honor the resolution. And I will address this under the mayor's, um, report and I will prepare a proclamation to be given to the, um, chamber for this program. Next we have resolution number twenty twenty-four dash thirty, a resolution authorizing staff to negotiate grant agreement and organizations in their amount as shown in exhibit A in compliance with the South Carolina Open Y'all Recovery Act. If there are objections, this will be taken up in, in executive session. Are there no objections? Hear none, that would be addressing the executive section. Next we have report to council. We have appointments to board and commission. And this item can be discussed in executive session. Are there any objections to have that in executive session? Hear none, that item will be in executive section. Next we'll move forward with the mayor's report and I will open my report in reference to, um, with the resolution for innovate Florence. I do want to acknowledge that this resolution was to recognize, recognize a program to actually help small businesses who are operating from their homes or from their truck. It's a partnership that was developed through an ideal that I had in working with the, with the chamber. I do want to acknowledge that a member of council did call the chamber and asked the chamber not to come. And I've talked to Mr. Mike Miller and because it's been made political, it was stated that this particular council member say they did not want me to be promoted. But I do want you to know that this is the atmosphere that I've worked with, with this council for the last four years. It's been a toxic atmosphere. And what you see today, when it comes to this resolution, is an example of what I've had to put up with for the last four years as serving as your mayor. So for me, I did send a letter or email to our city attorney and also to our city manager to acknowledge this. But I do want you to know as a public, what you see today is what I have tolerated for the last four years as your mayor. So that being said, I just want that on record. And from that point now, I'll move forward with our reports. I do want to call for our city manager, Mrs. Scotty Davis, to give us an update on our water. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. As you know, on Thursday, June twenty-seventh, uh, we experienced some water quality issues, uh, in Florence. We were working, uh, in the area, uh, working on a valve and we had a malfunction on a valve. Uh, when we replaced that valve, uh, water pressures actually broke another valve. That valve allowed water to be released in some relief areas, uh, pipes that we use only for relief. Those pipes had a lot of iron content in it. Uh, that actually made it into the system and out to our citizens. Certainly very, uh, unfortunate incident. Uh, staff has worked tirelessly to ensure that we don't allow that to happen again. Uh, but certainly there's, that was an issue for us. Just a little bit more about our system. I want to, uh, make sure council understands, uh, in June of this year, uh, we actually looked at eighty-four to eighty-four bacterial samples, uh, throughout the city of Florence. This is something that we continue to do on a monthly basis. In that we had no issues, uh, and we test for chloroform and E. coli. Again, no issues of the eighty-four samples. And in fact, we've never had issues of any type of, uh, bacterial issues in our system. Our system is comprised of approximately nine separate systems, uh, that we've purchased over time. We have about seven hundred miles of water lines, thirty-four thousand customers. We produce an average of about fifteen million gallons a day in water production. We have thirty-three wells and fourteen groundwater plants, uh, that we maintain. Now we have experienced some water, uh, clarity issues and we get about eighty calls on an average, about eighty calls a month on that. We do understand that not everybody's calling, so we know that number is higher than that. Uh, and again, whenever those calls and we ask the public to call, uh, the city of Florence, six, six, five, three, two, three, six is our number of our public works department. Uh, and when we get those calls, we will go out and address that issue and assess the issue to find out what's going on, uh, there. When those calls occur, generally it's somebody has actually gone into our system through a broken water valve, water main. Uh, we've had people working on our hydrants or some of the construction is shaking some of our lines and having that iron, uh, float within and actually spill into the system and into homes. Uh, once we generally, once we flush those lines, we're able to maintain the clarity, uh, that the city would like to be known for there. So that's just a brief overview of things that's happening, uh, since again, June twenty-seventh there. We do recognize that we do have some issues, uh, that we're addressing. We have with us Porter Rivers, he's the senior vice president of Southeast Water Leader. Uh, and we asked, uh, through AE Comm Engineering Firm. We've asked Mr. Rivers and his firm to do, uh, a groundwater assessment. Uh, he's completed that assessment, I think is important, uh, for council and the public to hear his assessment. Uh, and at this time I'll ask Mr. Rivers to come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Madam Mayor, members of city council, it's a pleasure to be here this afternoon. I appreciate the opportunity to present in front of you. Uh, as Mr. Davis indicated, I'm a senior, uh, project manager with AE Comm, a consulting firm, working for utilities throughout the state, throughout the world actually. But my focus has been here in the state of South Carolina and working, uh, for over twenty years with the city of Florence. I've had that pleasure. Uh, the groundwater condition assessment is our topic today. And if I can do this properly, there we go. All right. Uh, give you a little bit of a background information as to why a groundwater condition assessment. Uh, give you a little bit of a background information as to why a groundwater condition assessment was necessary, what was done for that assessment, what our findings were and our recommendations, as well as the action items that the city has taken to address some of the findings. Okay. Yeah. You just tap it. Okay. There you go. I do not do I T work, by the way. Just let you guys know that is not my specialty. Anyway, um, a little bit of background information as I was talking about, uh, like many uh cities in the coastal plain of South Carolina, Florence uses groundwater as a major resource for its drinking water supply. Um, this is historically been a very abundant, very uh good resource for our cities. But uh, due to growth in our state, this resource has become um stressed. There's a lot of people using this resource here in Florence. You should be aware of this. As a uh groundwater plant normally used to serve the city, the city had to construct a surface water treatment plant in uh late nineteen nineties and two thousands. Um, typically, the groundwater has served agriculture or industry as well as public water supply. But the distress or the drawdown on the groundwater table has caused utilities to seek other uh resources. What this does is creates a system that goes from a simple, straightforward groundwater system to a complex, multi-source system, which has certain issues associated with the distribution of that water. Uh, as you can see from the slide, uh, about thirty seven percent is uh resources from the P D River, where sixty three percent are groundwater supplies coming out of both the Couch Branch and uh Farley McLean Branch aquifers around the city. A little bit of flashback in time. This is uh nineteen forty six, post World War. Uh, you can see that the cit- this is a graphic taken from a a previous consulting firm for the city. Expanding the city's system, uh, at this point, it only extended as north as Sumter Street. The expansion of the system is going into the North Florence neighborhood, the Northwest Florence neighborhood, and there's some expansion going into East Florence. But this was the extent of the groundwater system back in nineteen forty six. And some of those components are still uh part of the system today, which means that they have aged and some have actually outlived their useful life. Uh, this shows that same graphic, the red circle represents that part of the distribution system back in nineteen forty six. As you can see, the system has expanded significantly uh on the north bordered by Darlington County, on the east by the P D River, on the west by the town of Timminsville and down south uh going below uh Effingham and Evergreen. The way the system has expanded, uh, there's been organic growth as the city itself has grown. There have been expansions in addition of additional groundwater plants to serve areas as the city moved out. There's also been acquisition, as Mr. Davis referred to earlier, of other uh local small systems. Uh, Quinby in nineteen ninety nine was acquired by the City of Florence. In two thousand and two, the city took over the county system, which goes farther out into the county. And in twenty fourteen, the city took over and rehabilitated the drinking water system for Timminsville. There's also been private developments such as Oakdale, Pine Forest, Glendale. Uh, there's a whole list of those that once the developers have completed those projects, they turn them over to the city. Uh, the challenges with this type of system growth is that these systems are not typically sized for future growth. They're not built to municipal standards. And in the most part, they're in poor repair and need rehabilitation. So they uh actually, the city is doing a service to the citizens by taking over these systems. So the distribution challenge that the city faces is the two water sources. Essentially, the P D Regional Treatment Plant located up in the Commerce Park, P D Commerce Park is on the northeast corner of the system, which makes a lot of sense because that's the closest spot to the P D River. But what it means is there's a lot of ground to cover to get it all the way over to the other side of the system. Uh, surface water plants are centralized facilities that can produce a high volume of water, whereas your groundwater plants are more regionalized or localized facilities that can produce a much smaller quantity, but at a very given location. And as we mentioned earlier, the city's system started as groundwater, expanded as groundwater, and then has introduced in a relatively recent timeframe, surface water into the groundwater supplies. So the P D Regional Plant being up on the northeast uh corner of the system, as part of that project, we installed a thirty six inch uh water line, as you can see in the green, uh, going down to a a western branch going along Old Marion Highway, extends out as far as Otis Way Tank over on just on the other side of ninety five. Then you've got an eastern branch going down, currently goes down as far as Wallace Road. That's a those two blue lines are thirty inch lines. These large pipelines are the largest ones in the city's system and are necessary to distribute the large volume of water from the surface water plant. And for many years, this was adequate uh from the time that a surface water plant was installed until recently. There have been uh, this has been able to supply the city's water system effectively. Um, just to give you an idea. I can. All right. I'm doing it wrong. Ah, there you go. This is a graphic taken from the city's uh computerized hydraulic model, essentially showing the distribution between groundwater and surface water in the system. As you can see on the uh northeast quadrant in the upper right-hand corner, the pink area represents the areas served primarily by the surface water plant, whereas along the uh the dotted black line, that's a mixture of groundwater and surface water, depending on how the uh actual flows are moving in the system. And you can see towards the south and southwest, uh, they're primarily groundwater supply plants. So why was a condition assessment necessary? Uh, mainly, it was a response to uh extreme weather events occurring between twenty fifteen, the Thousand Year Storm, and twenty twenty two. These included hurricanes, uh, microbursts, heavy thunderstorms, freezing conditions, as well as drought. And the objective was to increase the resiliency and reliability of the water system, not only for water quality, but also for production capacity. This is a an example of one of the hurricanes, uh, Matthew in twenty sixteen, October twenty sixteen, made landfall along the coast of South Carolina. But uh as a category one, the wind damage was not that significant, but there was a substantial amount of rainfall, which led to events. Uh, wait a minute. Hey, back it up. Yep. Okay. One more. There you go. So this night showing the animation on there? Okay. All right. So, but anyway, there is a significant amount of damage. Erosion over uh near the Country Club of South Carolina broke an eight-inch water line, which causes a major loss in pressure throughout the system and then ripple effects throughout. That was not the only damage caused during that storm. This is the uh, an example of the impact of freezing to the uh, to the drinking water system. If you remember back in January twenty eighteen, the first week of January, there were periods anywhere from forty eight to seventy two hours where it never got above freezing. And this has uh some critical impacts on drinking water systems. It can be really a double whammy. The freezing conditions, uh, particularly in an area that has a high groundwater table, puts a lot of pressure on the pipes. It doubles the uh pressure on the pipes and can cause those pipes to fail. As you see in that picture on the right, there could be leaks that uh that come out of that condition. At the same time, many of your customers are opening spigots in their homes to prevent their homes from freezing up. The pipes were freezing up. So that puts, even though it's a small drip, if you've got, you know, thousands of customers turning open a small drip continuously flowing, that puts an extensive demand on your water system. So you've got high demand at a time when you're actually losing pressures in your system. So this, this is why freezing conditions are 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 not fun for uh water system operators. This is another graphic from the computer model. If you'll see, the the red areas are the areas where pressures drop below regulatory requirements, twenty pounds per square inch, at which point the city has to issue a boil water notice. Uh, the the area to the far left on the graphic is uh over there in the blitzgeld area, right around Darlington County line. This is the highest system or the highest area in the system. So they routinely suffer low pressures in that area. Those were exacerbated by these leaks and high demands. But there's also an area in the central part of town, which eventually it was discovered that there was a warehouse with a ten-inch line that had burst inside the warehouse. And the city forces were having a challenging time trying to locate the source of that leak. But these are the kind of conditions that occur uh when freezing occurs. Well, what's the city doing about it? In uh, I think it was twenty twenty one, the American Rescue Plan Act was passed uh with a focus on infrastructure for municipalities throughout the country. Uh, to take advantage of this, the City of Florence started uh developing a plan to pursue some of this funding. Uh, the focus was on the production facilities for the groundwater system, the G E plant, which had been out of service due to problems with some of the wells, the Oakdale Water Plant uh on the west side, the Pine Street Plant, which is critical to the downtown central area, and the River Road Plant, which sir uh serves areas out in the southeast portion of the system. The uh program was implemented in South Carolina as the South Carolina Infrastructure Investment Program and managed by the Rural Infrastructure Authority. And uh City of Florence was successful in gaining ten million dollars in grant funding uh based on this application. Uh, another part of the application was to look at uh adding new water lines, particularly on the western area of the system uh where there were a lot of dead ends. Some of these were the old uh Florence County system that had just ended and were not connected. By connecting these lines together, you create a circular flowing pattern, which helps prevent water quality issues that uh Mr. Davis was talking about earlier, where sediment can settle out on those dead ends. Uh, there's also a line on the eastern side we'll talk a little bit more about, which is an extension of the eastern transmission line to bring more of the surface water further into the system. So for the groundwater condition assessment, uh, Randy Osterman approached us in the summer of twenty twenty two and asked us to do an assessment, uh, mainly concerned because of the age of the groundwater system and the impacts that it can have when you have these severe weather events. So we started collecting data from the city with water quality reports, regulatory reports, uh, existing drawings of infrastructure for the treatment plants and the wells, as well as well testing records to indicate how what production capacity was available and what uh water quality was there. We conducted site visits to each of the wells and the water plants, and then we prepared a technical memorandum to summarize our findings and results. Uh, the major findings were that although the City of Florence has an abundant capacity, potential capacity of groundwater resources, at the time we did the study, less than fifty percent was available for use. Another finding was that the treatment plants, and I'm speaking primarily about the groundwater treatment plants here, there was inconsistent water quality. Some plants were producing excellent uh water quality, meeting the city's requirement standards, while others were not doing the same. Uh, there was also an equitable distribution of production. Some of the plants that had higher capacities were being overused, and this can create problems in itself, uh, shortens the life of some of the infrastructure. Uh, there are some limits to what these facilities can perform, and it also creates issues with equal distribution throughout the system. Uh, one of the issues that we found was that there had been a lot of turnover in the operations staff for the city's uh water water system. Uh, but and when you replace senior or experienced operators with uh new operators, there's a learning curve that has to be addressed here. And that led to some of the inconsistent performance. Some of these newer operators did not understand the significance of what their job is, is a public safety uh and health issue. And we're not uh, basically, we're not keeping up with the the criteria that had already been set aside for water quality maintenance. Uh, also in discussions with city staff, there was anywhere from twenty five to thirty percent of the available positions on on the books were not filled. So they were understaffed using uh not completely well-trained operators to get a job done. So that, not to say that's an excuse, but that was a finding. Uh, another issue that we identified was that portions of the system were operated manually without automatic or centralized monitoring and control. And this, we'll talk a little bit more about how this can be a bit of an issue. So what were the recommendations? For the groundwater resources, we recommended there be an evaluation, a thorough evaluation of the groundwater wells, basically pulling the pumps, going down with cameras, inspecting to do to identify if there's any issues with the screens or the the infrastructure for the pumps. And then using water quality data, rank these sources that the city has to determine which ones are most effective and efficient and which ones need to be decommissioned. Because there are some that they're more trouble than they're worth, but they're part of the inventory. It would be more effective to essentially take those out of commission and put new ones in. Uh, we also recommended the development of wellfield management plan to help better evenly distribute the the use of those uh facilities throughout the entire system. From a water treatment plant performance, uh, enforce the level of service criteria, the the guidelines that have been established by city staff for treatment of the water quality and maintain those water quality standards on a consistent basis. We also recommend an evaluation of the treatment process. There's new advancements that can be used to help improve and make it more efficient and more effective. Uh, updating standard operating procedures so that the operators know precisely what they're supposed to do and when they're supposed to do it. And increase the training for the operators. And again, implementing a system-wide monitoring and control system. The number one. Since outside station. Oh, sorry about that. Yeah. Go. But but worry about. Okay. All right. Here, yeah, those were the recommendations. I'm about to get the hang of this thing. There you go. Uh, as part of the report, we developed estimated cost for each water treatment plant. As you can see uh from this graphic, uh, maybe you can't see, but it's just under forty million dollars to restore each of these plants back to a reliable condition. Uh, the ones that are highlighted in yellow are already being worked on as part of the skip grant. Um, but this was focused on anywhere from half a million dollars to over five million dollars to repair these plants. Uh, action items taken by the city since uh we've submitted this report, uh, the review of the groundwater inventory is underway. They've initiated as part of the skip grant evaluation of the groundwater wells. And we will be preparing as part of a distribution master plan, uh, a wellfield management recommendations. Uh, if for as far as the treatment plants go, the attention to detail has improved. There's been a lot more consistent performance for the treatment plants uh once the condition assessment was completed. Uh, we're also modifying the treatment process, initially starting at the alligator water treatment plant, where there's been a lot of water quality complaints in that area, uh, switching from aeration to chlorine uh for oxidizing the iron, updating standard standard operating procedures, and implementing training. I think the city has retained a a senior uh water operator to actually spend time with the newer operators and make sure that they the newer operators and make sure that they understand what they're doing and the best way to get it done. And as part of the recommendations, Josh Whittington has taken our recommendation and is putting together a plan to implement some detailed improvements for the control system. We feel this is critical, particularly in a time when it's difficult to find trained operators. Having a centralized monitoring and control system allows you to see what's going on in your system and be more of a proactive approach to preventing problems and a reactive approach to fixing problems. I mentioned the distribution master plan. This was started back in late 2021, early 2022, put together a scope that the city approved. And as part of this, one of the things for the city to balance their water resources is to get more surface water to the other side of the system. This is a graphic showing the extension of the 30-inch water line that was going down the east side of town, coming down Williston Road, then turning into Freedom Boulevard. Phase one is actually already under design and should be, should be under construction sometime towards the end of this year, early next year. But there's several other phases that will extend this 30-inch line all the way down to Alligator Road. There it will tie into a 12-inch line that goes all the way out to the western end of On the northern end of the system, as you guys are, I'm sure, aware that the surface water treatment plant is being expanded from 10 million gallons per day to 20 million gallons per day, but currently there's only one pipe coming out of the system going to the distribution system. To keep the pressures from getting excessive and to help spread more surface water throughout the far parts of the system, we've recommended a 36-inch transmission line. This is a conceptual drawing of it, basically paralleling I-95, moving down the northern part of the city and terminating over on the western end, I think at Ebenezer, where it ties into an 18-inch line that completes the circuit all the way around the city. The 18-inch line ties into eventually the Alligator Line that I just mentioned. So this will help relieve some of the stress on the groundwater system and also give the city more options and more reliability and resiliency in getting and using the, the very good resources. Many, many cities would be jealous of the resources that you guys have. What we're trying to do is make sure you're able to use them to the most effective way and the most efficient way. I deserve it. I think that was pretty much the, the end of my presentation. Any questions at this time?
Well, I'd like to say thank you for coming forward to give this information for us. And also, um, next month, we will also have another update that will be coming to us from DHEC. So, but thank you for that report. And at this time, I'm a call back for our city manager, Mr. Davis. And Mr. Davis, I'm going to ask that you give us an update on our corridor improvements in our studies that was done.
Madam Mayor, if I could, I just wanted to touch on a few points on, on the study before we go to the next one. As you saw, it's about $37 million in repairs. I just wanted to highlight the $10 million that we have currently have through the South Carolina Infrastructure Investment Program. Those funds are, are, we're using those now. We have identified about $6 million in operating budget and construction budget that we'll be adding to make improvements there. And we have about $3 million set aside to match the state grant. Gives us close to $20 million there in funding that we're working with. We also are, and I, and I have to commend Mr. Hemingway. We've been working hard to access other grant funds, and he's been tasked with that. And we are hopeful that we will have some other funds, and hopefully we'll be able to make announcements, preferably this year, about some other grants if they come, and we'll use those funds as well. Mr. Rivers also talked about staffing, and it was 25 to 33% of the positions that were not filled. Right now, we're fully filled except for two positions we have available. We also are adding in the budget that council recently passed in June. We added two new positions. They're a water operator and a maintenance position, and we'll continue to try to add positions as we move forward in the coming years. So I just wanted to touch on those highlights there. And I have Mr. Moore, he's on that committee to look at the corridor study.
And as he's coming forward, I do want to acknowledge that some of those funds that we will look at will be some federal funds that we'll open to be able to draw down upon the rest. Yes. So thank you. Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Just wanted to do a quick, I guess, background and kind of status on where we currently are with the Lucas Street Corridor Study. The way this is funded, it is, it's through a grant that we received with the EPA about two years ago. This is to conduct different studies regarding properties for brownfields assessment and things of that nature. But with that, we can also do planning studies. And Lucas Street, when we initially applied for the grant a number of years ago, was, was one of the main focuses of the areas that we wanted to look at. So today, we, we, we had an initial kickoff meeting using Stantec, our, our consultant to complete the study. We met with all the local utilities, DOT, the county, you name it, they were involved in an initial meeting. We also involved some stakeholders, some key property holders along this corridor to, to get their ideas and, and concerns with the corridor. And then we also held a, a public meeting that same evening. And, and as we move forward, we're going to continue that. We actually have one this week. So a part of that will be an analysis of all the properties along the corridor, some of the brownfield issues that pop up through each property that, that abut that corridor, and then a proposal on the highest and best use on how to capitalize on those properties and, and give an overall master plan and idea of what this corridor can eventually look like as we work towards that. So this corridor, the Lucas Street Corridor, the study area extends from I-95, which is furthest to your left, down to essentially the end of the bridge at, at Church Street. And so this is the study area. Again, this is very early on. This is a lot of data gathering, also having discussions with, with council, with stakeholders, with staff, you know, getting ideas and concepts on what, what some of the problems are, more importantly, what some of the, the solutions are. So we have a public meeting coming up this Thursday, which is July 11th. That will be from 5:30 to 7:00. And as we move forward, this will be a pretty quick study. They've really put a lot of manpower into this because of the sun setting of the grant dollars. So we should have a, a final study that will go to committee and then to council this fall. And that's just a general update. Does anyone have any questions?
Chair recognizes calls from Ms. Jackson.
That public meeting on July 11th is where?
It is right here in the city council chambers.
So anybody who wants to have any comments on the Lucas Street Corridor can be here July 11th at 5:00.
Absolutely, we encourage it. We, we contacted all the property owners in the area, letting them know, and also we'll, we'll put that information out this.
And what kind of possible brownfields will we find over there?
Uh, as you would, the, the typical suspects, like petroleum tanks, oil tanks, things, you know, that, that are common with gas stations, just, just your, your usual suspects that you'll, you'll find. We don't have, I don't know that we have any dry cleaners through this area that was located down on Church Street, but there, you know, we'll look at the Lazy Boy property and some of these other industrial properties that, Santee Electric property, you know, some of those that were once being used now are lying dormant and, but I think it will mostly be just the kind of typical things that you would see through.
Now, when you say at Church Street, the bottom of the bridge, is that right there at Pamela Street?
Uh, it would be at the intersection of Darlington, where Darlington turns into Oakland, and Church turns into.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you for that update. We appreciate it. And at this time, I'll get ready to bring the mayor's report to a conclusion, but also just want to remind everyone that this coming Saturday, July the 13th, we'll be celebrating the second annual PD Youth Day. We invite everyone to come out. That time period will be from 10 o'clock AM to 2 o'clock PM. So at this time, that concludes the mayor's report, and we will move forth with reports from the committee. First, we're here from the chair from the Business Development Committee.
The Business Development Committee met June 27th, and it had myself, then Councilman McBarnes. Unfortunately, Councilman Braddock was unable to attend, but we had, Scotty was there, Carl Michael, and we had a presentation, which was, glad, thank you for doing a presentation here today, from the Stantec group. We had about a 45-minute presentation, it was a very in-depth presentation from them about the corridors, where the Business Development Committee has been looking at these corridors for the last few years now, and the Lucas Street Corridor obviously is, is an important one that we're looking at. And certainly, I would encourage everybody to attend that workshop that's going to be coming up on Thursday after 5:30. I think it'd be a very important one for us all to attend and to get the input. The, David Sky Sykes and Jenny Horn gave the presentation on it, and it was very detailed, going through a lot of the in-depth elements of what has been reported here earlier. But it was also going into a little bit of getting some ideas floating around about what could be and what possibilities are for the future. So that's very exciting, as we all sit around, and I would encourage everybody to just, you know, put your creative hat on and to just try to envision what the future could hold, because there's a lot of potentials for that corridor. Of course, one of the big challenges that we have is that part of it's in the city, part of it's in the county, and so it calls for this collaboration with all entities, because you had SC, DOT, road. So there's a lot of, lot of challenges, but over the next few years, I imagine this will be something that we will continue to work on, right? Mr. Moore? And is that correct, Scotty?
Correct.
Thank you, sir. So that was, that was very helpful. We also got an update on the current utility projects, the surface water treatment plant expansion, and the Jeffries Creek Sanitary Sewer Interceptor, very exciting. Mr. Hemingway, that we have that $24.7 million fund for that project, that that was announced earlier this month, and so that will be, the process of developing that will be underway. That's going to be another one of these long-term projects, but will take a lot of pressure off of the Jeffries Creek Interceptor that's there. We also had some additional information regarding the South Carolina Infrastructure Investment Program, skip project, and we've got five miles of new water line, remove the dead ends. That's going to be going out to bid in July 2024. And if I'm not mistaken, we just had a passing of the budget from the state, and the city of Florence got granted $5 million for additional water line along Freedom Boulevard, which I think was part of what was presented earlier today. So your pathway of carrying the water, it looks like we have at least part of it funded from the state of South Carolina. Thanks so much to Representative Philip Lowe, as well as Representative Alexander Jordan for their assistance in securing those funds for us. And our next meeting, I think because of the municipal association conflict, we've got the meeting pushed back to July 25th. Is that right? Yeah. So our next meeting of the Business Development Committee will be on July 25th. Anything else for any other council members? That's, that concludes our report. Thank you.
Next, we're here from the chair from the Community Development Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Community Redevelopment Committee, we met last Wednesday, and Councilwoman Lynn McCall and myself were present at the meeting. We, we tackled the issue on crime. I introduced a five-point plan, but we needed to actually work on those plans to fine-tune them. And there were some things that we are still in the making of doing, so I won't go into the details as of now, but we will continue to work on this plan as we actually get more information from our chief and, and what he would like for us to, to do. Also, we are continuing our work on affordable housing. Our CDC and, and our staff are working really, really hard with beautifying our city with, with demolitions, with weatherizations, with repairs to homes, and also the rebuilding of many homes in our community. So we're busy at work and just excited at this time for all, all that has been done. I think that's it from my committee. Is there anything? Okay, that's it, Madam Mayor.
Next, we're here from the chair from the Marketing and Public Relations Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am the chair of the Marketing Committee. We had to reschedule our last meeting because it was June 10th. We'll have to reschedule this month meeting because we will be in Greenville next week. But we do have some good news. The wait is over, and Si is here. So if you have not signed up for Si, please, 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 that is the City of Florence AI-powered chat box. We are excited about Si. You can always text 855-964-3929 and say, hey, Si, and Si will come and interact with you and talk with you and find out what your needs are. So please, 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 program Si in your phone. His number is 855-964-3929. So we need as many people asking Si and, and signing up for updates from the city. The wait is over, is here, we waited, is here, make sure you signed up. They did the introduction at the, what was the Florence after five last, on the 28th? So the staff was out there promoting it. We're just asking people to please, it does not take but a second. I did it on that first day, and it took no time. All I had to do was say, hey, Si. Si came on, was like, hey, what's up? Okay, maybe not that, but he came on, he was like, you know, hey, I'm City of Florence AI chat box, and just pretty much, what, what do you need? What do you have to say or whatever? And you also can sign up to receive, excuse me, some text messaging and everything as well. So please, 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 program Si in there. So when you need anything, you can just text, hey, Si. Also, we're, we're doing the redevelopment of our city website, of course. It's in its development stage. And of course, as the marketing and public relations team, our goal is always to bridge the gap of communication, trust, and transparency between the City of Florence and our voters. And so we are working on several awareness campaigns. One, of course, is for recycling. Next, we have the hurricane season, which is coming up, so we're going to have an awareness campaign on preparing for the hurricane season. And we are also, thanks to Amanda and her staff, developing an awareness campaign for the city's rental registry program. So we are definitely excited about that. Our campaign awareness, of course, is to always educate and motivate you, okay? So if anybody have any questions, ask Si. No, but if y'all have any questions, just let us know, but don't forget to program Si into your phones, okay? Thank you, and that concludes my report.
I would say thank you for that report, and I did sign up for Si.
You did?
I did a three-digit text. So I think that's going to be a good tool for all the citizens. Next, we have a report from the Chair of the Finance Audit and Budget Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We met twice. We met on July 2nd, as well as, well, June 26th, and then the follow-up meeting on July 2nd. Primarily, we got from the CFO, Mr. Kevin Rollison, we got the Uh, primarily we got, uh, from the CFO, Mr. Kevin Rollison, we got the monthly financial packet for May of twenty twenty-four. Everything is tracking good and, uh, we're hitting all our goals, uh, for this year. But mainly what we did discuss, uh, was the opioid funding request. We had a total of two point nine million dollars in requested funds. But, uh, for this cycle, we only had five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-six cents available. Um, and out of that, it was nine applicants and the committee recommended five for funding. And I see we have it listed for, um, discussion executive session.
Yes.
So therefore I will remain recommendations to them, hold recognition to them.
Thank you so much. Does that conclude your report?
Yes, ma'am.
That has concluded, concluded committee reports. And next we are prepared to enter our executive session. The following items are listed for executive session. A for a discussion related to a contractual matter thirty dash four dash seventy A two. Then B for a discussion regarding appointments to boards and commission thirty dash four dash seventy eight one. For C for a discussion of a contractual matter to receive legal advice regarding PFAS litigation thirty dash four dash seventy eight two. D for personnel matter thirty dash four dash seventy eight one. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to go into executive session. Any discussion? Hearing and all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. We have just returned from executive session. At this time, no actions. Our vote were taken. We will proceed back to our agenda. When we go back to our agenda, we have executive session in relationship to a contractual matter, which was thirty dash four dash seventy eight two one. That particular, um, item will be found on our agenda. It's resolution number twenty twenty-four dash thirty. It was a resolution authorizing staff to negotiate grants agreement with organization in amount as shown in exhibit A, in compliance with Soculata Opiate Recovery Act. Are entertaining motion so we can hear from Mr. Rollison.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm making motion.
Can we have a, a motion so we can hear from, um, hit from?
Motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
So this time we're here for Mr. Rollison.
Thank you, Mayor. Um. We received back in September of two thousand twenty-three. Council made available, um, or the state made available funding of six hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, which is the, uh. Government political subdivisions portion four twenty-four for the opioid recovery money. At that time, we had approximately one point six million dollars in requests. Council awarded six hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars. Uh, and so in May, we were informed that we had additional funding. Uh, which brought us to unavailable fund, funds of five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars. We had ten agencies, um, request funding, a total of one point nine million dollars. Uh, the, uh, the Finance Committee has recommended, uh. A breakdown of that money with seven thou- seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars going to the Potter's House, seventy-five thousand going to Tenacious Grace, one hundred thousand dollars to PDE Healthy Head Start. Um, fifty-nine thousand, five thirty-five for a peer support specialist at Circle Park and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the House of Hope.
Do we have any questions? Any questions? Hearing, hearing none. Um, basically I do want to clarify that all the organizations that presented are some that who have received, um. Money since you probably correct that we, can you tell us the ones who received prior to that again?
Yes, ma'am.
So.
Um, of the ones that have applied, there were five that had received funding before. Uh, that was the House of Hope, uh, received two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Resurrection Restoration Center, uh, received a hundred and five thousand dollars. Tenacious Grace. Oh, I'm, let's see. I'm sorry. Resurrection House of Hope received a hundred and five thousand dollars. Tenacious Grace received, um, one hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. Circle Park Peer Support received fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty, and the City of Florence received twenty-five thousand dollars.
What's it? Thank you. Any questions? Thank you for that report, Mr. Rollison.
I got my information. So if the motion that, the motion that stated is either recommending the committee recommendations or is it?
At this time, what we did, we simply got the remotion so we can hear from it. Then now we're at the point that if we need to make the recommendations, because as you see, um, what he's presented is the information. What was came forward for the committee that the committee recommended, which is in our report that we have, but he didn't put the whole report up there. But your committee report here, Part of House Recovery IC was recommended seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars. The committee recommended Tenacious Grace for seventy-five thousand. The committee recommended PD Healthy, hm, PD Healthy Start Committee, uh, organization for a hundred thousand. The committee recommended Circle Park Peer Support Specialist Position for fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars. And in his presentation, the committee recommended House of Hope for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that's a part of what's being presented in, you know, this year. So.
So still, still, still my point. So the motion is the recommendations, right? Is that correct?
That would be unless there's amendment.
Okay.
And I would like to amend. Actually, we have a motion, putting your first counseling services to get some funds. We got it. So, um, so recommendations for putting your first counseling, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand would be good. Two hundred and fifty thousand, which will put us at a point with, um, amendment, um, where would two hundred and fifty thousand come from? We can take it from the House of Hope that we gave to last time. So we have amendment to the motion to, um, take, have funding go to putting your council service first. You're putting your first counseling service LLC, um, with two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Therefore, removing the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from House of Hope, who received two hundred and fifty thousand dollars last year. Is that your amended motion? Yes, I think we can give them that in the beginning of next year. Okay. Okay, I'll second your amendment. So we have amendment on the floor. That's read. All those in favor of amending the motion, please raise your hand. All those in po- opposed, please raise your hand. Let it show that the amendment failed from a vote of five to two. So we're back to our original motion. Any other discussion? Hearing, uh, hearing none. All those in favor of the mission, original motion to go with the recommendation from the Finance Audit Committee, please raise your hand. All those in polls, raise your hand. Okay. Let it reflect that the resolution to adopt the amendments, adopt the funding as recommended for the committee has passed. I would have that completes that item. Next, we have the item for discussion regarding appointments to boards and commissions, which was item number thirty dash four dash seventy eight one. So at this time, we're entertaining any discussion in reference to the appointment to boards.
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, in the last, in last month, uh, the staff has at the council direction conducted an audit of all appointees to boards and commissions to ensure that they comply with state law and the city code of ordinances with respect to residency, representation of businesses and other organizations in the city. And professional or other qualifications required for this position in question. Based on the responses to the questionnaire sent to each appointee as well as failures to respond to the questionnaire. Council has determined that the following members of the city boards and commissions are not qualified and their seats are declared vacant. And the seats are listed. When it comes to the Construction and Maintenance Board of Adjustments and Appeals, James Cooper Junior, Joe Linder, Chasnick T. Rivers and Harry Cook. Under the Housing Authority, Gerard J. Moultrie, City of Florence Planning Commission, we have none but Aesthetic Advisory Committee, we have Joey Robinson. The Resilience and Sustainable Advisory Committee, Lenora Raven, Parks and Beautification Commission, Cecil Floyd and Simon Lee. And those are all the, uh, boards and seats that have been vacated. Any of those who have been deemed unqualified may reapply for the vacated seat based on changed circumstances that will bring them into compliance with the city code. Thank you.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? We got a motion? Do we have a second? Do we have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Hearing and all those in favor signify by raising your hand. And opposed, like sign. Let reflect that the motion did pass, you know, honestly. Next, we have.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to add the, uh.
Oh, do we have another?
Yeah.
Please proceed.
Yep. At this time, Madam Mayor, I move that we, uh, tabled all appointments, uh, to boards and commissions while, while the, uh. While the, uh, uh, city staff and, uh, and members of council get together to, um, help make sure that our laws are both compliant with both state, um, as well as our code of ordinances. Also, I will move that we table all appointments, um, until the Business Development Committee, uh, consider, uh, makes a recommendation at a subsequent council meeting.
Second, business committee. Discussion. Um, this is actually a policy procedure taken to the whole of the board. So the whole of the board needs this information input. So I would amend that we go to our original motion, that we have the city staff, city attorney and the city council to review the process we have. And then come up with how we perceive with a policy. That is my.
Point, point, word. I made a motion. I, I, I've got a second.
Well, um, and I amend this, this is my amended, amended motion because, um. And do we have a second to amend the motion? Second. Hearing any discussion? And I will discuss, the reason why I'm making this amendment is because the city council is responsible for all the action of this council. We do not delegate our legal responsibilities to subcommittees. Every council member when they vote need to be informed of every bit of information that we get. And so to try to sublegate this to a business committee, this is not business, this is city policy and we are the policymaking branch of the government. That is why I amended this. So with amendment on the floor, all those in favor to have this city council get the simple motion. Work with our attorneys and our city staff to do what we're elected to do. Please raise your hand. Let it reflect to voted to have the city council do their responsibility. All those who's voting, they please raise your hand. Let it reflect that five council members have voted to not.
As to the characterization.
Five council member have voted, five council members have voted not to amend the motion. And with that being said, the motion now is as stated to have this information sent through the business committee. All those in favor signify by.
Are we still got discussion?
Yes, we can still discuss.
I just want to say that, you know, in these committees that were formed by all of council, no, no vote or, or action is taken. Counsel gets to vote on everything. It is simply in order to have a, a extended amount of time so that we can address an issue that's been really, um, plaguing council for some time. You know, in fixing not just one particular issue, but all the issues in relation to, uh, these committees. And these committees are how the city does business. These committees are essentially how we conduct ourselves and how we do business. They affect how, uh, our parks look, our economic development. They, our zone, our zoning, our permitting, our planning, and so they have a huge impact. And, and what I hear from the general public more so than anything is that the city is hard to do business with. And, and that is something that we've got to change. And we formed these committees to have, you know, a, a pinpoint look at all these things in order to make a good recommendation, just like with communication and, and the things that have come out of that. If we would have had all of council, uh, we didn't have a, a, uh, app when all of council, it, it went to a committee and then through that committee, it was able to be brought up, you know, because we could bring in people to speak on it. So this is not circumventing council in any way. If you look at our state legislation, if you look at our federal government, committees are formed to evaluate situations, to make recommendations, bring them before the whole of council for a vote. There, there's no way to circumvent, um, our process because we all have to vote on it. So that's, that, like Councilman J. Bailey said, is a mischaracterization. I'm not the Chair of any of these committees, you know, and I'm for all of them because I feel like that we get, we don't just come up here on Monday afternoon for a few hours having gotten our packet. Two hours before, we actually have the opportunity to evaluate the information over an extended period of time to make good recommendations. So that we don't find ourselves in the same situations where we're having to sue our BZA because our business zoning, because they approve a sign a hundred times outside the scope of what our ordinance says. And we're having to, we're having to deal with this housing authority issue with multiple, you know, commissioners and elected officials, you know, because of how our process is now, we've got to fix this process. Our process is broken. It's affecting how we do business. And the business committee is the most effective way to make good recommendations that all of council will vote on. So that's why I voted to allow the business committee to review this so that we can have an effective process to fix an ongoing issue.
Chair recognizes counsel, Ms. Swift Jackson.
And I voted against this because I think it is all about to fix this. I think all of us have an input on these boards. A lot of us wasn't here when a lot of this stuff happened and don't need to be excluded. If we're going to have time to do it, then I think it needs to be the whole of the council that is doing it, that's taking on this because this is our job when it comes to policymaking and legislation. We cannot run from it. We can't hide from it and we can't fear from it. We can't be intimidated by it. We must be leaders and do what we have to do to fix these things. Like you said, these boards are, are broken. We have to come together with our collective minds to fix these boards, not one mind over another. But the collective mind and the whole entire of the council should come together and fix this problem, not some of us, not half of us, but all of us. And that is why I chose not to send it to the business committee. I think it needs to be the whole of the council to fix this problem.
So we're still in discussion because we have that prior motion on there. And so I'm just going to summarize like this. We're a seven-member board who has been elected to handle the business of this city. This council chose in twenty twenty-one to develop subcommittees, which has their individual chairs. Prime example, when it comes down to what we just did with the opioid funding. This information, literally when it first came out, rather than coming to the council, the committee wanted sent to them. And I did request that it comes back to the full of council because anything that the subcommittees worked on should be therefore come to the council first. And if the council don't feel like they can handle it, they want to refer it to the subcommittees to get more information, they can. Subcommittees don't elect to pull information because we as a whole council have that. I requested that this information go out all the applications because all of us needed time to review the applications. So we can see what we thought about the application, not just the subcommittee. So any information, when it comes out, wherever they sent it, every council member should have access to the information at the same time. Prior to going to have opinions because sitting here now, if we, I would not have requested this information to come out, we would not have known what the recommendations were until just as, as the councilmen said it. To right before the meeting, but that would mean the things coming for the committee. to right before the meeting, but that would mean things coming for the committee. So the ones who are not on the committee, we still wouldn't have the information until the package would have came out on that Friday or Wednesday or whatever. So for me, I still believe that every council member needs to be informed about all the information that's coming in. Now, if the council elect to send it to a committee, that's fine. But no, I want to know all the information in advance because there's some things once we get it and all of us view it, then we find some things that's not correct in information. So for me, the majority, and I think we've made this clear, majority of this void when they vote choose this direction, four to three is all it takes to make anything go back a far with this council. So yes, I believe that for my vote, I want all of the information in advance so I can be sure of what I'm voting on. When you're talking about getting state statutes and everything, it's going to be a lot of information. And if the council want to send it to the business council, please, the will of council majority shall rule. But as mayor, not serving on any of these committees, I want every bit of information that goes to these committees to be sent to me as a council member at the same time. That's the only thing I ask. I don't want anything to lump sum last minute. So that's my position during this discussion. We have a motion on the floor now to, as stated by the council member, to have the information sent through the business committee. That's the summary of basis what we're having. So
You have to table all nominations at the
Mm-hmm. So that's
So the recommendation is made by, um, the business development committee.
Okay. Okay, that's the recommendation. Is that a motion for you? Is that
That's a motion, yeah.
So that's a motion from you. So so we have a second. Now, that was a discussion what we just had anyway. That's why we it was already on the floor. So now that that motion is there, all those in favor, please raise your hands. All those opposed, like sign. Okay. Therefore, the motion has passed to send the information through the business committee. Next we had on was, um, C item. And this was a discussion of a contractor matter. And she received legal advice regarding PFAS litigation from thirty dash four to seventy eight two, at which time we simply received information there's no vote or action required. Next we had a personnel matter, which is thirty dash four dash seven dash eight, and that also requires no vote or no action at this time. That completes our agenda. At this time, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So
So second, this motion is second. All in the discussion, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Is that adjourned?